Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, November 28th. Can I get a motion to approve the regular board minutes from the November 14th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Steve, is there any public participation this evening?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a number of presentation items and there's been a request to take, to move, item number four to the front, so with that, I think we have the gentleman from Sabatino's and his attorney this evening, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrath with offices at 599 North Avenue in Wakefield. I'm here on behalf of Sabatino's Restaurant, Inc., which is located at 330 Main Street in Wakefield. I think the board is familiar with Sabatino's. Sabatino's has been in business in town since 2007, 2010. Yeah, I keep saying 2007. He always corrects me. 2010. Thank you. 2010, when this board permitted their all alcohol license and their common vixial license. They've operated a very successful business in town, which is frequented by many residents. Since that time, the manager of the all alcohol license has been Carmela Nason, who is Anthony Sabatino's sister. Anthony is with me tonight, to my right. Sabatino's is a closely held family business. Both Carmela and Anthony have interest in the business. And since Carmela has taken the ball and run with it for seven years, it is now her brother's turn, Anthony, to hopefully take over the manager position of the all alcohol license. Anthony has worked at Sabatino's since it opened in 2010. He serves as a bartender there, he serves as a manager, operations coordinator. He's currently there 40 to 50 hours a week, which he will continue to do so. Anthony is tip certified. Anthony and I have reviewed the regulations of the town of Wakefield as it pertains to alcohol licenses, so he's familiar with that. And as I've said, since Anthony's been working there, their record has been impeccable. So our request is to change a manager, to allow Anthony Sabatino to become the manager of the all alcohol license in place of his sister Carmela until her turn comes up again, whenever that might be. We'll be back to that.
Questions from the board?
Well, I just want to say, I do have one question, but I do want to say, thank you guys. You run a great business.
Thank you very much.
I know that you're very highly thought of around town, and we need more businesses like Sabatino's.
Appreciate that.
I did get one question about parking out in front of the building that the employees have taken up all the spots. That's just something I heard, and I was wondering if you had any thoughts on that.
Yeah, sure. Best of my knowledge, I mean, they try to park in designated areas and try to keep the front free for customers for around town.
Yeah.
So I can look into that.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Really appreciate it.
No problem.
Any help. We don't want to put any more restrictions on business than there already are. I mean, I've...
It's tough.
It's tough.
It's tough.
I've seen the amount of regulation, so, acting as a landlord, so God bless you guys for staying afloat and doing a good job, so...
Thank you very much.
With that, we need a vote?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve, I'm sorry, I gotta look at your name again.
Anthony Sabatino.
Anthony Sabatino, thank you. As the manager for Sabatino's.
So moved.
Wow, resounding. Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Getting back to our agenda. Next up, we have a request from Sharon Gilli, Director of the Lucius B Memorial Library, to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $4,791.21 from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Request from Jane Fanjoy of the Wakefield Lions Club to have Santa's headquarters be placed on the common during the week of November 28, 2016, December through December 23, 2016, have Santa arrive by fire engine on December 10, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. We have an unemployment presentation. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, in your package is a summary report from our unemployment consultant. We have used Tax Management, Unemployment Tax Management Corporation, probably for the last seven or eight years now. And the reason why we brought them in, and it's for a very reasonable fee of about $750,000 a year, excuse me, $750 a year in our...
Wow.
Wow.
You're rich.
We are rich. Because they really manage our submissions with the state regarding unemployment. Wakefield is a pay-as-you-go, as most communities are, meaning we don't pay a percentage of our payroll. You can imagine what that would be if we had 1%, 2%, or 3% of our payroll, like most companies do. We pay as claims are filed. And unfortunately, a lot of people that will file claims that maybe really aren't, shall we say, actionable for unemployment. So over the past two years, for about $1,500, we've avoided over $88,000 in claims against the town of Wakefield. Every month, UTMC goes over their, the unemployment report, which actually Sherri goes over first. She sends it over to the school department, and we make sure that people aren't putting in for unemployment that shouldn't be. You know, instances are seasonable employees, people that switch jobs, people that retire actually then put in for unemployment. So we've also worked with UTMC in actually making sure that our files, our HR files, have the proper letters and proper designations in them. So when they, when we do fight a claim, we have all the ammunition we need. And in your package, you can look at some seriously potential liability that has been avoided on certain people. So I just thought, you know, this is something that the board does support in its $75,000 unemployment budget every year it comes out of that. And I think it is, you know, very money well spent, and just wanted to give a very brief overview on that as we go into the budget process.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Do you need any kind of a vote?
Nope.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Discussion on recreational marijuana.
Okay, we're having all sorts of fun tonight. As you all are aware, the question four, which this board actually did take a stance against, actually passed statewide, although it did not pass in Wakefield, interestingly enough. And this does create some burdens on cities and towns on how we deal with question four and its aftermath. And an aside is how we're going to handle some of the employment issues. So that's something I'll come back on another day on. But, so after question four passed, and I think Selectmen May brought this up at our last meeting, we had already scheduled a meeting with myself, Chief Smith, Town Council, and our health agent to really talk about, because Wakefield has been on the forefront of really trying to stop substance abuse, and we've done a lot of work with our young people, and I'm very proud of that. I think this board should be very proud for presenting all that. So what we've come up to, up to is a strategy to start fighting this, which I think is under the will of the board and frankly, under the will of our electorate. And I'm going to ask Town Council to jump in if I, if I run astray here. Although many portions of question four do not go into effect until actually beginning of 2018, and there was a lot of rumors about the state legislature changing regs or slowing down or changing this whole thing, I think it's our collective view after coming out of this meeting that we would be looking to present to this board to have on the April Town Election Ballot, an actual article, to I guess, for lack of a better word, opt out of the provisions of having a retail marijuana location in Wakefield. Does that sound correct, Town Council?
That's right. We can have a bylaw in Wakefield under this new statute that forbids recreational marijuana of all types. No manufacture, no cultivation, no retail distribution. But that bylaw may not be passed by town meeting, which is of course, the way we pass bylaws. It has to go through a different hoop. The hoop we have to jump through is a referendum vote. We'd have to put it on the ballot. And so when we had this meeting, we decided that the first thing we should do is put such a referendum vote on the ballot at the next annual town election. If it passes, great, there's not going to be any recreational marijuana business in Wakefield thereafter. If it doesn't pass, I think Steve was going to get to the next point.
Yeah, the next point would be if it doesn't pass, then we could look at some zoning restrictions like we did with the medical marijuana. But we thought that, let's, let's put this first, you know, the state may make all this moot, and there is some thought that we would have to sponsor a vote to actually opt in to having one, is what Senator Lewis is stating. I'm not so sure personally, going back to my old constitutional law days, whether that kind of is outside of the parameters of the ballot question that was passed by the electorate. But I stand to be corrected on that. But we thought, first in, let's, let's get our ducks in a row first, because the legislature may not do anything right away. We don't know.
Tom, can I ask a question? Does the bound question that you passed specifically allow for the referendum question to be put on a town ballot? It gives towns that out?
It does.
Well, that's surprising, basically.
Yep.
Bound question, okay.
Any other comments or questions?
So I guess we'd be looking to come back with that if it's the feeling of the board, a consensus. Don't think we need a vote at this point, but we'll start drafting that. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Tom, would somebody have to go out and get 200 signatures to put that?
No, no. This board, which is the custodian of the ballot, can decide what goes on the ballot.
Okay, okay.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, the Civic Center.
Okay. I'm going to start on this, if that's okay. Selectmen Longo and I worked collaboratively on looking at the Civic Center and how the town is working on it. And I'll start on this. We do have a PowerPoint. I know you guys love my PowerPoints. So we'll start with that, and then Tony, Selectmen Longo, please jump in. So anyway, the Civic Center, which is on Main Street, was built in 1913 as an armory for the town of Wakefield. It was decommissioned in 1975 and sold to the town for $1. During the early 70s, a lot of armories all over the state were decommissioned, and a lot of cities and towns bought them for different uses. We actually, Wakefield, closed this in 1981 as it was deemed too expensive to operate. And this was kicked around a lot during that time, and I can recall there being a lot of discussion about selling the building, getting rid of it. And actually, what happened was the Americal Association was started and created at that time, and they were there to kind of manage the building. And the thought was at that time, they would manage it and the town would have no financial obligation on it at all. And actually, what happens is the town of Wakefield, through the Board of Selectmen, leased the building to the Americal Association for $1 a year. And I think over the years, the Civic Center, the Americal Civic Center Board or Association has done a pretty good job of managing the building. But I think our community needs and the building needs are making that continued management somewhat problematic, and I think a little bit too costly as we move forward. So as I mentioned, the current status of management is the Board of Selectmen via Town Meeting action has executed a 10-year lease for the management of the Civic Center through 2019. And you might say, well, Steve, why are you talking about this now? It's the end of 2016. However, there is a six-month termination clause in that lease that must, that termination notice from us must reach the Civic Center Board by June 30th. So we would have to get that out to them if the board so desired by the end of December. So over the last few years, I think we kind of crossed a, crossed the Rubicon as far as the Civic Center was concerned. And I think we realized as a community that this is a town-owned asset, and it cannot self-fund itself and self-fund capital improvements. And you may recall, we've gone to Town Meeting for, brought in the energy improvement contract. We've done work on the roof, the front walkway and columns. The Heritage Room has been redone. The Drill Room floors have been sanded and waxed. So there has been a lot of town money, gone to Town Meeting, there's been actual articles that have been spent on capital improvements there. And I think the community has really enjoyed the Civic Center. Some of our current tenants in there, the anchor tenant really is the Boys and Girls Club, and they play close to $60,000 a year that goes exact to the Civic Center Board for the use of that building. And Selectmen Glynn was very instrumental in getting them in there at the time, a few years ago. Some of the other tenants are JC Marketing. WBA is in there, has been in there for years, and they're using the gym quite, quite often. Wakefield Soccer has buildings down there. And the Wakefield Interfaith Food Pantry is another one of the anchor tenants. They have a wonderful spot in the basement. They pay over $10,000 a year in rent. So there is a substantial amount of rental money going into this building. However, over the last few years, we found that in 2015, there was a very small net operating loss, and about $1,500. And in 2016, there was a very small operating gain, about $1,200 or $1,300. So I think in looking at that, you know, they certainly have done a pretty, pretty good job in doing it and maintaining it. They would never have done any of the capital without the town. And they also cannot pay the energy contract. You may recall on that energy performance contract, there was some money actually paid on that back to, back to the town on the bond. That was not under the town bond, so we've been covering that in the DPW deposit. So I've been thinking a lot about this building and actually talking with Selectmen Longo about this, because as a former Rec Commission member, they've been really looking at this building as what could be a real moneymaker for the town. So what I'm considering is there are some action steps I'd like to look at tonight. I'd like to get authorization from the board to give notice to the Civic Center Board that we are going to kind of re-manage back the building. I would move our very talented recreation director to the Civic Center office. He has been actually chomping at the bit to get in there. He wants to run a lot more programs. I think that might have sold him on the job early on that we...
When we first hired Dan, I think it was about three years ago, about six months into the position, he looked at that building, he looked at me, he goes, "I want that building." He goes, "We're not using it the way it should be using. That is a moneymaker for the town, and it's not being utilized in the way it should be."
And I think what's been great to our Rec Director's credit is that he is actually doing a lot of programming with the Boys and Girls Club right now. They are sharing resources, they are sharing, I want to say, I want to say, marketing lists. They're getting, you know, they're playing off each other, and we're bringing in more money in our programs, they're bringing in money in their programs. And guess what? Guess what? We're getting more people involved in giving more services to the people of Wakefield. And not necessarily paid through the tax levy. So it's really worked out well. What I expect to happen is that we will have a better long-term capital plan developed. We'll have better management of events. We'll have increased use of events such as fundraisers and class reunions. One thing that doesn't happen there right now is fundraisers are very difficult to have there because there is no kitchen to speak of. And what happens is, you know, you go to one of these other areas and you end up paying for the bar. If people came in and ran fundraisers and events there, they could actually run their own bar and actually make more money for the event. More sport and recreation programs run via the Recreation Department, and increase in income from more programming. Some of the things that we've talked about is taught programs, women's fitness, senior pickleball, senior pickleball during AM hours. These are things that our Rec Director wants to do. After school classes on the days the Boys and Girls Club isn't using the gym, birthday parties, rentals. We have actually two bouncy houses that we purchased with the Wakefield Academy. You could put them in there and have birthday parties for people. Adele programming at night, you know, we have already have the basketball leagues, summer recreation program, vacation week program, half-day programs, large functions, steam classes, babysitting classes. So I am just completely expecting that we will see a lot more income coming in. And I also took a look at the books of the Civic Center, and they're doing a great job running it, but they don't have what we have with the town behind it. And I can look at close to probably $100,000 a year in expenses that we will not have to be sent out. For instance, they're spending, hate to do this, Tom, $2,300 in legal fees. We're not going to spend that. We're already spending... Management, they're spending a lot of money on management and salary. They're over $45,000. Demograph will manage that like he does now, under his current guise. So that's a salary that's going to go away. So when you think about this, I think this is just, you know, we have the model, we're working on the model with the Albean Culture Exchange. I think this makes a better town, makes better use of our buildings, and I think in the long run, is not only going to bring money in on a capital basis to improve our asset, but probably bring in some more revenue to the town to actually offset some of the tax base that we're using. So I don't know if Selectmen Longo wanted to jump in.
No, when you look at the return on investment we get, it's about 1% a year. I see Dan bringing that up to, you know, 15, way into double digits, you know, within two years' time.
So what we'd be looking for tonight is, I'd like to be going forward, letting the Civic Center know that they would, we would be looking to invoke the six-month notice. I frankly think that they may come and decide, can you come in earlier? They just had a change in personnel. Somebody needs some help.
Questions or comments? Brian?
Steve, what went into the expenses calculating that operating loss? Is that just true, like kind of OpEx, or is it some, you know, building overhead and...
You know, it's...
Because that could be all over the map.
It's a little bit of everything. I can give it to you, but it's from...
Almost 50% with salary.
Yeah.
Right, but does that include, you know, some sort of capital expenses?
No.
Or is it just straight operating?
None of that is capital. Capital's completely separate.
So it's like cleaning and...
Cleaning, general maintenance, HVAC, refuse removal, which is almost $13,000 a year. We certainly wouldn't be paying that under the town contract.
Good.
Cleaning supplies, we wouldn't be paying that. Legal and accounting fees, payroll fees, payroll taxes, you know, $12,000 in payroll taxes, very high utility fees, you know, things that we can kind of bring in as a town and not have that cost.
Do you think there's expenses missing from that? I'm actually just surprised that they've operated, you know, marginally in the black and then what I would call kind of flat at a $1,500 loss. It just sounds, I would expect that building to lose, maybe there's no taxes, no insurance, right?
Well, they also, well, they bring in $150,000 a year in revenue. So they're offsetting their costs. I think we can bring in more.
Yeah, yeah. But there are no taxes, obviously, right? Because we own the building.
Yeah.
There's no revenue. Excuse me, no insurance?
Well, it would be, it would be part of our insurance. We would still insure the building.
Yeah. Interesting.
But it's, but it's less.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think it's great. I think it's part of something like this, we had to look at how else we could improve the building. Still not...
Absolutely. Part of this will be a capital plan.
Yeah.
Meaning you need bathrooms, the bathrooms need to be upgraded.
Is it square footages? Is it maybe issues?
ADA, do you have a square footage of hand?
No. I don't know, it's sorry. Couple hundred thousand. I'd say so.
I think it's an excellent idea. I think it's been a long time coming, and I'm glad to see it going in this direction.
The other thing would be our system of managing. I mean, we have a recreation director that manages all of the fields in town. I mean, you can actually go online, and you can apply, and you can put in your, your information within his parameters. That's not happening there right now. It's a very kind of catch-as-catch-can, and they're losing a lot of potential revenue. There's a lot of dead time during the day. Are the current tenants in there? We would not look to get rid of them. They've been longtime tenants, particularly the two anchor tenants. Boys and Girls Club loves being there. It's a great location for them, right from the middle school, it's where their offices there. And I think the food pantry has done quite well.
Yeah. Love to see it make enough money to lower the rent for the food pantry.
Yeah, I mean, those are certainly things we could certainly look at. Yeah.
I just have one comment.
Yeah, sure.
In 1942, the American New Caledonian Division was authorized by Major General Patch to defend the island of New Caledonia against a feared Japanese attack. And then Major Patch shortened the name to the Americal Division. See? Little bit of knowledge none of us had before.
All right, you know what? I'm against this.
You're not here for any conversation while we're wondering.
There should be a blackout front that explains that.
It's kind of a cool, yeah, I never knew it was called that. So here's my little education today.
Steve, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for your help now going forward. Any further comments? Do you need a vote from us, Stephen?
I would need a vote from us.
I would entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the, or the, sending of notice to, to the current management group that the town plans to take over.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. All in... Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Just a quick question. They're expecting this...
Yes.
You don't do things by surprise, so...
No, no.
This is all good.
I was told it was a hostile takeover. I said it's not hostile. That's why I'm coming to see you first.
I think Steve and I have had discussions about just about every board member in the last couple of weeks.
It's the cavalry coming.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion made, seconded, all in... Motion carries, I should say, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to Selectmen Longo for our board.
Moving ahead to number five, personnel and appointments. Appointment of poll workers as presented. Do we have a list of the poll workers on your... Sorry. Okay, we have, are we going with tellers?
I think that you can actually present this as presented in your package. Tellers, clerk, and warden of each precinct. I don't even think you need to read the names. You don't have to.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the names? All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns? Okay.
I'll do that after, yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve the slate as presented in your packet?
So moved.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted.
And by the way, all of these tellers that you just voted on have, they've already corresponded with our office through their wardens, and they have, all of these have acted as tellers before, and they've actually been, you know, paid for by the town. So they've been in contact with our office.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next up, oh, I skipped over F. Thank you, Steve. To accept and expend a gift or gift from the Savings Bank to the town of Wakefield in the amount of $500 for, oh, Phyllis, for flower pots.
I asked the Savings Bank, which I think is one of our greatest institutions in town, no matter, I don't care who goes to them, if there's any way of them helping us, they will. And as you know, I went and asked them, could they help with paying for the new flower pots in Greenwood? And they were more than generous, and yeah, we're asking you to accept and expend a gift from the Savings Bank to the town of Wakefield of $500 for those flowering pots.
Seconded. Is there any, yep, is that a motion? Motion made by Phyllis? Seconded by Brian? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted unanimously with thanks, Phyllis.
I'll take it.
Oh.
See how fast I slipped through my...
It's like at home.
You should be used to that, Steve.
I know.
Okay. So next up is item 5B, Appointment to the Bylaw Review Committee. We have Cindy Schatz of Eighth Quarter Street. Do you want to do this as a full slate?
You could do that, yeah.
All right. Robert Vincent of 22 Flanders Lane, Brian McCubery of 82 Elm Street, Jeff Steigman of 12 Humphreys Street.
I move we approve all four. Point out all four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded. Phyllis?
I, I think all these people are really excellent, and I think, you know, I approve of all of them. They're all fine. But I would like to ask Brian McCubery to head up this bylaw committee.
Should that, should that be a separate, or...
Didn't we already do that? Or is that the other?
No.
That's a chart.
Be tied to this vote? Or do you want to amend the motion?
I'm just curious why you'd want that, Phyllis.
I said, "Say that what?"
Why would you want that? Why, why this particular person?
Because I think we need someone to head it up, and I think he's so familiar with the town, and he's done so much, and he knows a lot about the town.
I agree.
And it would be good for him to head up that committee.
Yeah. So, so Phyllis wants to amend the motion to approve, did anyone make a motion yet?
I made a motion for all four.
Okay. So, so Brian, would you care to amend your motion?
I'd like to amend my motion to appoint all four people to the committee and make Brian McCubery the chairman.
Second. Anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Great. Thank you.
We're going to ask Brian.
Does he know?
No, we're going to...
No.
He's appointed.
You don't have to ask him. We just appointed him.
Yeah.
You know how well he takes to that.
I really think that if he's amended, he'll do a really great job. And the fact that he's resigning from the bank, it will give him the extra time to do it.
He needs a hobby now, still.
Okay, correspondence. You have the U.S. Department of Homeland Security bulletin. Comments from the Board. Tony?
Just hopefully everybody gets out and shops local. And I want to thank Steve for his presentation tonight, and thank you for some extra parking signs in Greenwood to get rid of some of the freeloaders that were taking the commuter rail.
Excellent. Thank you. Peter?
No, all's good. The lighting in the front, right on Farm Street, is looking great. That's it.
Thanks. Tom?
Nothing. Thanks, Steve.
Just a couple of very quick things, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be coming back either the December meeting and the first meeting in January with the overall budget process for, hard to believe, for fiscal year 18 coming up again. If you or any other board members have any budget priorities that you'd like me to look at, to bring in there, please let me know. I think that that's very important. This is really a way that you guys can weigh in and make your imprint on the town, and I look forward to making those all work. One thing that a lot of people on the second issue have asked about are the roads in the town, and I get it. We need to do a lot more work on the roads. I will tell you that I hope to be coming back with a schedule that we're working out with the light department regarding gas work and the electrical work, and with DPW regarding any water and sewer work in the lines, really looking at areas that can be completed in 2017, 2018, you know, 2019 going forward. So, we can really map out and tell the community, "Hey, we're going to do, you know, Vernon Street in 2018 because all the underground work will be done." The worst thing we have is, the worst thing that we have is to do a road, and then a year later, we dig it up because there's a utility that, that let go. So, we're trying to be much more proactive about that, cleaning any gas lines that have leaked, you know, moving from steel to plastic, and Tivo-ing all of our water and sewer lines. So, that's all coming, and it's all good stuff.
Thank you. Phyllis?
Yes, I have a couple of things I want to talk about. I'm addressing this to Town Administrator Mayo. Several people have asked me, we've had, with the picking up of leaves, I think, and maybe you can explain this, they would like to set the times different. They think we picked up the leaves too early the first time, and then the second time, it was so bad, the leaves were, it was really a tremendous amount for, because of the winter, the wind and everything. So, there must be a reason why we do that at a certain time of area. Maybe Town Administrator, maybe you could explain that.
I can, can get a little bit on that. It's a very tough calendar thing to look at. I mean, if we do it too late, then the snow comes down, and we get complaints, "Why'd you wait so long?" This is kind of an odd year with the drought, and it seems to me the leaves didn't fall as quick as I thought.
When we had wind.
The wind and what have you. But we did have two curbside collections on November 5th and then November 19th. So, we certainly aren't going to get someone to come out the Saturday after Thanksgiving to do the yard pickup. It'd be very difficult for us, probably a lot more costly, too, to get that done. So, there's always that weighing in there, too. However, the Nahan Street Yardweight Site is open. It's open through December 7th. So, take your own. There'll be another pickup in the spring, as we do. And I get it. It's a very, it's a very difficult balancing act we do. I will speak to the DPW Director to see if we can tweak it, but I'm afraid the year we tweak it, we're going to get an early snowstorm. A couple of years ago on Thanksgiving, we had snow.
I understand that.
So, it's, it's a hard thing. But I understand the question because I get them.
Yeah, and I figured, I tried to answer them that, but I think they'll pay attention more if it comes from you early.
I don't know if that's true.
Yeah. Then...
Thirteen years ago, a major snowstorm, the same day as a leaf pickup was scheduled, and those leaves stayed buried until April.
Is that right?
So, that's why we do it a little earlier.
Right. That's good. Well, they know that. The other thing has to do with the dog park, Peter. They're evidently, even before the dog park was finished, the locks were on, several of the neighbors in that area, there's a lot of people going in there with their dogs, okay? But the rules and regulations, what I want to make sure that these people understand about the dog park is that we're setting up some rules. We have a gate that's locked, right?
Correct.
And the people that take their dog in there are going to be responsible for picking up whatever the dogs leave. Is that correct?
Self-supervision, right.
And if there's trash...
Whether you're in there or just walking down the street, they should be taking care of business, so to speak.
However, you know, they think that the town of Wakefield is going to take care of that. We're not. I mean, I think the town of Wakefield is responsible for our parks and go in there and see that it's okay. But if people go in there, dog people or whatever, and they don't do what they have to, I would make a motion that we close that park if people aren't responsible.
Well, I think that's kind of, I mean, I understand your point. I'm embracing what you're saying. But owning a dog is a big responsibility. People that own dogs, 99% of the time, take care of the business, take care of the surroundings. And also, it's, it's going to be kind of a collaboration. You'll have 10 people in there, and if one person's not doing what they should be doing, those people will get on them. It's just like any other park I've been to, whether it's a dog park or Sullivan Field or any place that there's a park. So, I'm not really too worried about that. Right now, it's not open officially. So, unless they're climbing the fences and putting Muffy and Duffy over the fence.
When will it be opened officially? So, because I have a lot of people, they can't wait.
That's a great question. I can't wait. I think it's going to be a great thing for the town. I'm thinking it's probably going to be more like two or three weeks.
Okay.
And Steve might be able to...
As soon as we get the signage in, so, and get it up, because that's, we did want to have, make sure that people knew the rules and what...
But the people that are going in there now, what are they doing? Going in the back? There's a lot of people going in there.
I'm not sure how they're getting in there.
Well, the lock just went on. We found the people going in there before it was open. So, we then put the lock on. In fact, I had a woman call the office that was thrilled, and then she was kind of upset that, well, what happened? Now, it's locked. I really loved it. So, I explained to her, and then she was nervous that maybe she broke a rule. I said, "No, no, it's okay. I'm glad you enjoyed it, but we'll, we'll get there."
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't actually know people were actually getting in there before because the lock was on fairly soon. So, people with their excitement jumped the gun a little bit.
Those couple of days, they jumped in.
But there'll be an official grand opening, I'm sure, hopefully on Saturday. I'm sure Steve will cut a ribbon or two or something. But I think it's going to be fine. I think it's just a matter of, if they're, if they're in, if they're in there now, excuse me, then they're definitely just hopping the fence because the lock went on fairly recently. But I think everyone's going to self-police. And then people that don't will get, I'm sure, tongue lashings from the people that are 99% of the time very good with their dogs. So, I'm not worried about that. It should be good.
Thank you, Phyllis. Anything else? Brian?
Nothing really to say. Happy birthday to my wife. Today's her birthday. Because I know she's at home watching. Hang on.
Happy birthday, Sandy.
When Phyllis was talking about the leaves, it reminded me of, a few people actually asked me about the 7:00 AM start. For those of us that actually work, Monday through Friday, having a 7:00 AM start can be tricky because you have to take a day off to do the leaves. For people that don't work, it's not an issue. Just throwing out there that...
7:00 AM start to pick up, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. You do it on the weekend. You bag them up and you leave them out on the curb, right?
You'd, well, you'd have to bag them up the weekend before, and then you leave them on the curb that whole week, which I guess you could do.
No, I left them in my side yard. I had my kids do them, so...
Well, yeah, there you go. But for people, you know...
I didn't feel a thing.
Two people who work all week.
Good point.
It's kind of like an early start.
Good point.
Not that, but nothing probably can be done. But, and I already gave my Americal information, so I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Paul?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, and we'll try to be as brief as possible. The Main Street, Wakefield Main Streets Organization would like to be on our agenda for December 12th. We are in the process of moving forward on a fundraiser that needs the Selectmen's approval and sign-off on in order for us to get 100% match. So, we would like to make, bring that present, presentation in for the Board's review and see if they will agree on giving us the go-ahead to move forward on the matters that we have come up with. Since June, we have been polling the public as to different, what they like about Wakefield and what they would like to see added to Wakefield, similar to what we just did with the Arts Corner Program at the Galvin. We've come up with some good, great ideas, and we just want to see if we can move them forward. But we need the blessing of the Selectmen in order to do so. So, we'd like to be on the agenda for December 12th if possible. Questions, Steve, that maybe you can answer? How many full liquor licenses do we have left? Do you know?
Full liquor license, three or four?
About four.
Probably four. Yeah.
Four is a four, okay.
For flooring establishments, not for, not for package stores.
Correct. No package stores, so.
No, no package stores, right. That we had five on, on that one there. Okay. Steve, when you were talking about the light department and working with them to get things done, can we start making connection with them now? Because they have a few new members there. Can we have an open dialogue created so that we can actually discuss our needs on some of the areas that you mentioned as far as upcoming repairs? So, when they're doing the repairs in advance, see if they can put extra things in while they're doing the street over, especially from the light department. The DPW can control what they put in, but we really have to go in advance to talk to the light department if we want additional electrical connections put in anywhere.
Yep.
Last thing on this would be to, the Hall District is this Saturday. I hope everyone has the time to come to this year's event. If the chairman is present, we'd love to have you bring greetings. If not, a designee would be great as well.
I will be traveling, but thank you. I would, wish I could come, but I will not be around.
What time is the event again?
1:30 start time for, at the Civic Center.
It's a great time.
For the children's activity, 3 o'clock parade start at the Civic Center to the library steps. Anyone who is available to come on down, feel free to join us. We have a lot of people to congratulate this year with the high school doing a phenomenal job on multiple fronts, on winning awards and championships and such. So, it should be a great event.
It's always a great event. Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.